John, you.
I don't see him. Our chairman's not here, so our secretary will have to do something. Okay, I call this meeting to order. Oh. Our village planning commission, Ortonville Village Planning Commission. Now, first thing, turn your phones off.
Oh, I sure did.
I remembered it this time. Usually I don't.
All silence, fine.
How's it saying? I just get silent.
That's what I mean. Make it quiet. Call it the order has been done, more or less, disorderment. Alright, we're supposed to do a pledge of allegiance. Which, which young lady would like to do it?
Audrey.
There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Well done.
I always want to yell "Play ball" after that.
Play ball.
Just saying that out there, it's like you should say it in English.
The roll call.
Okay.
Roll call?
Bring the cowbells.
Bryce. Hayden.
Present.
MacArthur.
Here.
McAvinci.
Delighted.
Nivell.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
And Pashen is with notice. And we have Horn.
Good. What's our agenda look like? There it is, right there. I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Someone, all in favor? Aye. And a poll opposed. Okay. A pool of minutes, now this is more difficult. Minutes from July 2nd meeting here in this room. Anybody find anything that needs to be changed here?
A surprise one.
Okay.
And will they ever accept the minutes as presented?
Surprise.
There you go. Have them, no, there you go.
So only way I get in the minutes.
Alright, I'll think. That's right. I had you got in the minutes last time for being late.
Because I was late.
And then you apologized.
I did.
So you weren't.
And now we're rehashing that.
We are, so say it again.
Okay, all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, off we go. Public comment.
If I were public, I'd comment, but I'm not.
Anybody want to just, you know, step back from your commissioner assignment for a moment and comment?
No.
Okay.
And also do that for commissioners too.
I know, well that's different. Public comment. We don't have any. Chairperson comments.
That's you.
Well, I guess it is. I'll wait till later. Okay. No. Items from the commissioner, let's start right here. I can't think of anything out hand. I've got my head. Neither have I. Okay. Not normal.
Alright, I would like to thank everybody who was able to attend the joint meeting. It was great dialogue with everybody and it was nice to see everybody. And there is a survey that will be going out this week for everybody on every board, whether you're attending or not, to take the ideas that were brought forward and decide what your personal thoughts are on the importance level. And just keep in mind, there is a zero, which means not important to me this year. And then it's one, two, and three as to how important it is if you think it's important this year. And then that will be done as a whole. Every entity will do that, it will go out, and then you'll have the ability to pull and sort it by what planning commissions' thoughts were, and you're able to sit there and look at that in dialogue, and then you're also able to look at what people thought as village planning commission DDA and village council poll. So you'll be able to kind of pick it apart and take the information that you want of it. So that's that, that'll be this week. Keep an eye out.
By email.
Give your opinion.
By email.
By email. Yes, that's the way it's going to get on my spreadsheet. Unless you want to stand there and make the tick marks.
I forgot to tell you one, but I'll tell you in a minute.
Oh, and good quote, good point. If there's anything else you would like to add, or you were not available to give input, the burning questions was, is there anything special that you would like to see in the 2019-20 budget year? Email me quickly, so it can get on that list.
And a copy of the minutes from that meeting are in your packets, so you can kind of see what was talked about and what the questions were.
So please do that, like maybe tomorrow, I'll send it out Thursday, that'll give everybody a chance.
Sure.
It was just given to us, and yes, that one right there.
In the right back.
I know.
Right at the back.
Oh yeah.
Robert?
The, I do have a question. We did the dealership. One of the first things that they did, and they put in the railing around all of that, which they did, all the way around. But I think in our minutes, we indicated that there were the landscape around that.
You talking about the marsh over there that used to be lanes?
Yeah.
At the south end.
And there's no, I mean, the nice shiny railing stands out nice, but I think it was, we had added in the minutes to have landscaping shrubs done around low, low level shrubs around that, and I don't think they did it.
For instance? Blueberries. Or something like that.
Something like that.
Bring in the birds to keep over the cars to the road.
There they are.
I'll, maybe.
They won't be in my yard then.
I'm assuming that's a zoning thing, right? So I would send the building official there. Would that be correct?
Seems like it.
And I remember in the conversation, right, the conversation was that would be really nice to see it. Yes, great, we can do that, and that's where it was left.
So I'm sure they have.
I remember that was brought up a couple of months later.
Good intention, they probably just had too many cars to park.
Right, bringing in too many trucks in, but I don't believe there's any, when I went by there, it didn't look like it, you know, going down 15. And it would be nice if we had the drawing for the landscaping too on the new bank, if we had a copy of that.
It's coming, we don't have it quite yet, but it's coming. We told the bank it wouldn't delay getting a permit.
Seems like anytime I've been involved, that's always the one item that just seems to not get done because it's the very last, and they have a tendency to skip it.
Well, they won't be skipping it because the building official told them it will not delay your permitting, it will delay your C of O.
Well, that will do it then.
C of O.
Certificate of Occupancy.
Occupancy.
That's all I got.
And I'll get on that. It'll be next week though, because the building official's on vacation.
It's been up there for quite some time, I don't think we're in a garbage garage.
It'd be a good time to ensure that their dumpster was enclosed like it was supposed to be too.
We can do that all at the same time, while we're on one visit.
I have nothing.
Same.
Oh. Well, I forgot one thing that needs to be added to your list, and that is, well, that meeting was Monday, right? So Monday afternoon, I was over at Milford going through a forest property for a landowner over there who wants to sell it. And the point that I take from there, it was a hardwood forest, but it was so full of Oriental bittersweet vines that I could barely get through parts of it at all. Now, there's not any plan whatsoever for our village park, but along the edges of it are already Oriental bittersweet moving in, as well as black swallowwort. And of course, it's always had, you know, autumn olive and buckthorn growing up in there, but the, those things are mild compared to Oriental bittersweet and black swallowwort. So before that becomes impenetrable, we really need to look into getting someone, some company over there to deal with at least some of the invasive plants. Because you literally can't walk through areas if you let that stuff get established and just take off and take over the place. So invasive plant control in our, in our village.
And more research with some cog, because that's who, who we kind of get some of that guidance from and the education and the companies, the resources that are recommended and things like that.
That's true. Anyway, that's easy going there, because that's a big, that could be a really, that could really ruin our park over here. So, what's your opinion of it? It is a park. And it will be again.
Alright.
I hope so.
Excellent.
So.
It's nice that you know this, I wouldn't know this, I would look at it and say it's a plant.
I do this for a while.
I know, but it's just nice that you know that.
Well, I volunteer at Jersey County Parks, and every single day, they have somebody coming out all summer long, volunteering and working, and you can spend all day long, and but tomorrow, it doesn't make a difference. Like, every single day, somebody's working their buns off to clear this stuff, and it just does not quit.
That's for volunteers.
All those, all those items, if it gets grown, even not even as big as, you can't get your right, you cannot get through it. It's a tangled up.
The trees are just suffocated one by one.
Yeah.
They keep growing and kills everything else.
And, and another one is really quite, makes impenetrable masses is multiflora rose. It was introduced by DNR and the Soil Conservation Service a few decades ago, and now it's everywhere. You really can't get through it in a lot of places. Unless you don't mind getting all ripped to shreds.
Yeah, that's not my favorite.
So you can't.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, that will go on our wish list.
So, new business. Do you have anything you want to add?
I do not, but thank you for asking.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Well, you know, you're part of the team. New business, recommendation for reappointments, yes?
We need to first find out if Patty is willing to stand for another term.
Sure.
How long's the term? Three?
It would now be three years, after your first two-year term, it then moves to three.
So is everybody's term three now?
Except for yours, you should, when we added you back, we should have added you to a three-year term, but I didn't know what I was doing, so you were actually in for a two-year term, so you will come up.
But I don't understand that, because then it said in our things that they are all, the terms of members shall be three years, no matter.
That's your bylaws, but if you look at the Planning and Enabling Act, it gives the option for, I think the way I read the Planning and Enabling Act, the first term is typically two, and then after that, renewals are typically three.
But if we don't, we don't have that as our criteria, we have it as three years.
Right, but this, the criteria that you're talking about has not been adopted by this commission. That's just a draft that was started when Mike Lee and Jenna Lane were here, and never adopted.
So we need to adopt it.
That's why it's on the agenda.
We'll look at it.
Yeah, okay.
So Larry and Tanya are two years.
They are.
We serve for whatever our term on council is.
It's usually a January to January, usually a.
Did you already ask Bob if he's willing?
Bob emailed me that he was willing.
Okay. Good, good.
I might want to check on the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, because I'm not sure, are they supposed to be staggered where you have two every year?
They, yeah, they want you to get to a point where you're staggering.
Which we are, we are staggered.
Three and three.
Lee was the other two year.
And me.
And you. And then you're a three.
I think.
Your one, one.
Lee and I would put them back on.
Both are three years.
Well, I could grab, let me grab my roster, because it has the term, term endings on it.
Liz?
Oh, you've got it? Oh, thank you. Look at you all organized.
I was actually, I was concerned I was going to have to question whether or not I should be on or not. I believe in Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, it says for a council member who served a term that you're on council. So as long as I'm on council, I can do my term here.
It's been done before, so.
I don't believe it.
Lee is a three-year term ending next year. Patty was two-year remaining for creation, which ends this year. Melanie, two-year term.
Two years?
But you shouldn't, yeah, but that was.
I do not want to go through what I went through.
No.
That's why I'm wondering, what does it take? Now to get, fix that, because that was an error.
Let's just fix that, because I'm not, I, I don't, yeah.
So and Tanya, you will end with your election next year, unless you're reelected. Bob MacArthur, three-year remaining on Van Des, finishes this year. Rick, three-year term next year, and Larry originally was a two-year term ending next year, but now you'll be with your, it's going to be 2020. So can we just like, just ask a question?
Well, you'll go when council's in, won't you?
When he's, when he's.
My term on council is, is that my term with the term on council, yeah, that's, that's the way it says on the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act.
Not necessarily, because we could choose to change committees any time.
Right, so whichever, yeah, whichever.
Well, I'm, I'm just, it's just, if we're going by what the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act says, that says that council members serving on a planning commission, they serve for the duration of their council term. Unless we've changed the majority of the options, that's, that's always our option.
So then, if we want to change this to you, then we'll do that, we can do that in the bylaws if we adopt that then?
Then, yes, will be your bylaws, however, all reappointments still have to have approval of council, I believe. So.
It just gives one more year for you not to have to mess with it.
Right, well, could fix the error, but, right, we just simply say.
We don't have to bylaws yet, but we probably do want to think about whether.
But these reappointments, just like Patty and me, that still has to go to council?
Right.
We probably want to make them consistent.
So, yep, we're, we're jumping ahead, guys.
You know, just how much you want to do.
We're jumping ahead.
Okay.
For your reappointment.
Hey, if they don't want me, that's fine.
What month was that, Monday? Do you remember what month that was official?
I'll be honest with you, I think we were supposed to do this in June, but I didn't bring it up.
No, where, where you were reappointed, what month did we vote on?
Was that in, I don't know, September, November?
Was it December or January?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Was it? It was after I was on council.
I was just wondering if they had.
Oh, so you were in September, or November?
I was, my first thing was November, but I think it didn't happen until either December or January.
Because that will clarify.
Hmm, mine stood right up in, no, it was approved, so is that December?
That might have.
The first Tuesday in December, probably.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I think, because the election was in November.
Alright, then it was first Tuesday in December.
So the first tells me it was November, but then they did not fill that in the November.
In January, when we filled it with council members, and I think.
Because I think it was in December, we had the switch and council and.
My thing came up before that. Actually, it came before the election.
I think so, because Larry was in the audience the night.
You, you're, I'm going to, I'm going to say it was September.
I'm sure you was.
Yes.
I don't know, Liz will tell us.
Yes, it was.
Hard to forget that.
Liz, do you know? Liz knows.
Liz know.
Can we bat first?
The, okay, so it was December 17th of last year, and the exact motion was, motion by Bryce, second by George, to appoint Melanie and I Velt to the open planning commission seat, it does not give.
So I didn't think it did?
The term expiration.
Because in order to do it correctly, it would have to be a three-year. It doesn't stay a two-year on here. We're reappointing you, which is a three-year term when you are reappointed.
So then there's nothing in the motion.
And then that will go with our bylaws.
Just change the sheet.
So we could correct the error and be done with it.
Ta-da, okay.
Perfect.
Alright, so.
Because it was an open seat, so it would be.
It's a three-year, yeah.
Is it an open seat, or is it a delayed reappointment? I mean.
We're not going there.
You know what I'm saying? It doesn't, but that's what I'm saying, it wouldn't matter.
If we adopt it.
It's a new commission starting when they were brought in.
Here we go.
Okay, three years.
Okay, your three years.
Is that with that?
Alright.
Alright, so do we need a motion to, for Patty?
And Bob.
Okay, for both, you want it in separate motions though, don't you?
You can do a separate or one, whichever one you want.
Did you want to continue on with this?
Yeah, please. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend Patty Olson and Bob MacArthur for a three-year, how do I want to?
Reappointment.
Reappointment for planning commission.
Support.
I don't get the second thing.
Yes, you do.
Oh, wow.
You can support. Why don't, why don't we do it separately, and you can support one, Larry can support the other?
That's good.
You're running the meeting, you don't have to be part of all the motions.
You can be if you want to. You're not prohibited from being.
So.
Okay.
Are you going to run that election, or should I?
And then, so.
Election.
You're the chairperson, you have to.
It is an election.
Rick, you're the chairperson, you have to call.
Okay, so.
That has to go before council now, and then they approve the reappointments.
We have a motion, can you read the motion?
And we supported it.
Yes.
It's done.
Well, Commissioner and I Velt made a nomination to reappoint.
Did it written down?
No.
Okay. A motion. To run it now, right?
It's, made a motion to recommend that Patty Olson and Bob MacArthur be reappointed for a three-year term on planning commission.
Got it.
Good?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Because Lee, Lee already did the letters, didn't he?
He did.
Yeah, right here.
Personally, I think we can count Lee's letters as his vote.
So.
Even though he's not here.
Liz, that will go in our council packet?
So unanimous.
Okay, anybody else would like to add any recommendations?
According to that, that list, Liz, when is Lee's up then?
Next year. June 1st of next year.
Of next year, okay, very good. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that he wasn't supposed to be reappointed with them. Okay, so we're good.
Fair enough.
Alright, very good. You're both reappointed, well, no, we're recommending it for you.
Oh, thank you, yes.
But I'm glad you recommend. I'm still hanging in there.
So the next part of our, our meeting here is planning commission bylaws review, and that's this thing that was put together back in 2016.
Perfect.
And somehow did not get reviewed and approved for a change. So has, have you guys looked at this, or should we?
Yes.
She sent it out and I read it. And I believe that was put together by Mike Lee and Jenna Lane.
I think so. It might be very brief timing of it.
The only thing, the, the three-year was a question because of the error. And then for the officers that I had, it says, each shall be elected by a majority vote, and the commission is served for a one-year term. We don't know, we have been doing, I'm sorry, page one at the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The chairperson, vice pairs, vice chair secretary. So I don't know if we've been consistently doing it.
No.
Every year?
We have not, in fact, I raised that point, I said, I think it's been over a year since we last had an election.
I do too.
We need to consider whether we need to do that.
So do you guys like it per yearly?
Well, according to the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, we are, we are supposed to elect officers that will serve for a one-year term. So this is, this is basically in alignment with it.
At least it wasn't my soda.
If, if I could bring our attention to section one, members under C appointment, reappointment, removal of commission members. I think that should be, the appointment and reappointment should be by nomination. I think it should be of the village president and approval of the village council, because that's really in accordance with general law village act. The village manager is not, I don't think the village manager would be the correct person to be for nominating. They can make recommendations, but it really should be the village president has the authority to nominate.
And that is how we have been doing it.
Yes, but I don't want, I don't want our bylaws to be contradictory to either.
What I'm saying is, is that's not a change, that's just a correction.
It's a correction.
So all you do is cross the manager and put in.
Yeah, and it should say, yeah, nomination of the village president and approval of the village councils, I don't need to say.
Majority vote in the village council, okay.
So, if we have.
And at least we know the village president will be there for two years.
One-year term.
Unlike you village manager.
Yeah.
I guess each year, we have to decide whether.
Oh, will they?
Whether to ask the person that's already in, or to nominate other people for those positions.
Fair enough.
Correct.
So, I guess.
And will that be every, should we be doing that in July, if we're going off the fiscal June?
Each calendar year is what it says.
Right, so what's our calendar year?
I would say if your terms typically expire on June 1st.
Do it July?
Then I would recommend doing it at the next meeting after your new appointments have been.
Well, that's not a calendar year.
No, that's why I was, correct.
Do that that way. So Larry, you've been looking at what the.
But it doesn't say calendar year.
It doesn't say anything about calendar year, it just does.
Not our B.
I'm B in the second page.
Oh, sorry.
The first meeting of each calendar year.
Okay, we should put July then, which is our fiscal year.
If we change it to fiscal year, that would be in alignment.
Or we could just put each year.
By majority vote, elections postponed.
And then if it doesn't happen in July, because there's no agenda, it would be August. Does that make more sense?
It was postponed.
Well, no, they, they do for postpone.
If we take out calendar.
Then you got 60 days from that meeting though.
Then if we don't have a meeting in July.
First meeting of each year.
But it would be August.
So if we don't have a meeting, it would be the first meeting that we have after that fiscal year, so.
Right, so if we just don't even put fiscal or calendar, we just say each year, that would be.
Well, that would be the calendar year.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should specify whether it's fiscal, which starts on July 1st, or whether it's calendar, which starts on January 1st.
Each, each year means each calendar year, unless you'd say otherwise.
Okay.
Because the council committee appointments run on calendar year, January 1st. So if it doesn't make it to fiscal year, it would be nice.
Yeah.
Do we want to make it fiscal year, or calendar year?
Well, if appointments are in June, why are, why are appointments in June, not January?
Where's it say? Appointments in June.
There are terms on them.
This is, this is for the elections.
Terms were.
I think terms are according to Planning and Enabling Act. Or it's either that, or it goes by when I started, and I saw everybody was coming up in June, on staggered years.
Right.
So, but.
Maybe that's just the last round of appointments that were made, were out of June.
But that's appointments for people for the planning commission, that's not election of officers, that's a totally different thing.
Let me see if I can.
But it kind of should be one and the same, I mean, when you're coming out and you're deciding who would like to do what.
You could do it all at the same time.
You could.
It'd be this one here, MCL Act 33 of 2008.
And that's why I think with council doing November, December, that gives you the one month to figure out what you'd like to do, have a conversation, talk to everybody. So to do the June and July, it's the same concept. You're having that month to figure out what you're doing and.
Because if we change that.
Who's interested in that?
January would be here right away, so you guys.
Well, if it has, you know, if you have to be in June, you'd get July.
Well, then it would say fiscal year.
Correct.
Get off the year business, go to the agenda, I have a question. We're, it, all new items to be included must be submitted to supporting documents at least 30 days prior to the meeting.
Where does it say that?[1674.94]
Agenda.
Page two?
Page two.
Okay.
Page two, A.
You know, perfect, well, that'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it sounds good, but I like it. It's kinda difficulty.
Thirty days, that means it needs to be.
Okay.
You wanna change the.
Submitted at the end of this meeting.
What do you think?
I don't, I don't have a clue, but anyone just reading it, I don't know what your real practice is with that, but I, it still sound good to me, I don't know how we.
Yeah. We usually do it the third, but I mean, we get the new document stuff and we get our packets.
For like a week or.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a week, I mean, that's.
Cause that means anybody that's wanting to submit a, something to come to the planning commission has to have everything here thirty days prior.
Yeah, three days ago, yeah.
Thirty days prior to the meeting.
Thirty-one days prior.
That, that has Mike Lee writing all over it. So should we change that to Sunday?
I would leave it, um I send you guys your packets, I try to send you guys your packets the Wednesday prior to the meeting. So I would say everything needs to be demated the Tuesday prior to the meeting.
Arguing sake.
Yeah.
Looking at it from another point of view, this is anybody bringing anything to us, not within.
Yeah, but.
So, and you would need it to be thirty days before because it says manager or building department. So they have to receive it before thirty days to bring it and have it prepared to come. That's what I read it as saying.
Then I think fifteen days would be appropriate.
So to get in front of the building department, only fifteen days before it comes to us, you think that's comfortable?
No.
I mean, I think thirty days is what, I think that's, that's how I read that, it doesn't say what.
But it doesn't, it, but it says that the manager, the building official does this agenda.
The committee would like that agenda. No, they have to be, yeah, to be prepared.
The Tuesday, which is four weeks before the next meeting.
With the chairperson. With the chairperson, so anything that they have to bring to them, they have to provide to him.
So you're saying, I mean, the way this reads is you have to have everything ready for next meeting in the office.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
At this meeting.
Yeah, tomorrow.
I read it as an outside entity, we don't need all that to.
That doesn't happen that often, I think you're.
Yeah, I remember if I were probably.
That's fine if you want to be awake, I'm just thinking if somebody walks up to us with a week to say, I met with Bill last week and I wanna remodel my bank. And we're getting it, you know, seven days before.
I, I think it was because, it was because, okay, if they come up and they have a stack like this and say, here, I want this on the agenda next week. I think the thirty days was to give plenty of time to review, to properly review, give Bill time to review and the village manager.
For sure they didn't do that with the bank.
No.
Yeah.
They did not get that, couldn't have got it to Bill thirty days prior.
I'm just saying, I know you're saying for argument's sake, I'm just saying in the three years since I've been here, that has not happened.
Yeah, I mean, four weeks may be excessive, but I think two weeks would be.
Okay.
We, we should get at least two weeks for a chance for Bill to have an opportunity to review and village manager to review and make sure that there's, if there's any questions and they, or they need any corrections or changes to the documentation divided, they have an opportunity to do that prior to the meeting.
I mean, the way I look at it, this week Bill's on vacation, Quapp is on vacation next week, you can't get it in in those two weeks, you can't get it approved in front of everybody.
Well, we, and we tell people that when they're coming in, well, as soon as we can get this is this meeting.
So they don't, it wouldn't matter if it said, okay, I'm just protecting us just in case.
Rick, would you hand me an e-mail, I grabbed one at least through my paper.
So the question, do we leave it four or do we want it two?
Well, four is not workable.
Four?
Four weeks.
Oh, thirty days, you mean, I thought we said fifteen days instead of thirty.
Well, you just add which.
Yeah, but then at the end of the paragraph on the next page.
Oh, but I don't see four, I think that's why.
Not, 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 they have four weeks before the next meeting.
Well, I noticed you had a.
But we didn't get past this part, are we doing the thirty days or we changing that before we move on?
Same thing.
Are we doing it?
It's all one paragraph.
Yes, so if you pick one, we'll change both. Just pick which one you wanna change, we'll change both.
I'm leaving it up to you, Liz, cause you're the one that has to do all the work.
Right. Well, I.
Well, I think the, the key to that is, is making sure that there's time for somebody to get the building official.
For the building, fire.
Yeah.
For us, it doesn't, and I take that now that way, but when I first spread it, it was like it had to be here thirty days prior, but I, they definitely.
That is so that we have time, that the office staff has time to get it in front of the building official.
Cause some of those plans, I mean, you could have somebody come in with a pretty extensive.
Get any supporting documentation or corrections back from people who submit them and they have everything ready in time.
And these are two different things.
Right.
Fifteen days is agenda, four weeks is adjourned matters, totally different things, that's why I'm saying we have to finish one before we move on to the other.
Okay. Oh, all adjourned?
Yes, that's why this can be.
I'm noticing.
What's an adjourned matter? Something that we can't finish, then we have to table to the next one.
We, we had, we need some more documentation for this.
Kinda table.
I like that word.
Table is much better than.
I know that word.
Cause the adjourns.
Somebody spends time in Robert's room.
Wait, stay in town.
So we're changing the thirty days.
Liz, how do you feel about that? You good for that?
Right.
Or you wanna just leave it?
I mean, shh, are we making decisions for the building department, the village manager without them giving input? Neither one of them are here.
Well, then let's leave it at thirty.
After reading it, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, let's leave it at thirty.
Sorry I brought it up.
No problem with it.
Yeah, Bob, if, if you.
Is there anything else you're gonna bring up?
Bob, you've been through that with making the decisions on the fire department and how long does that take to get through all of that, is that?
It can be lengthy because it got, it may have to go through a mechanical inspector, it may have to go to some plumbing inspector. Maybe not that comes to us, but it may dictate what the, the plan, you know, that could get rejected on them right off the bat because of something, it, it might take thirty days to. I've spent two, three weeks on one, trying to get it all figured out.
But you can also tell them that.
Slower than most.
Well, and, and also the way we.
In all reality, we probably can't, you know.
What we've done in the past too is rather than bringing a complete package in and saying, you know, we've got the building officials sign off on it and blah, 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 blah. We're saying, okay, Bill still needs to look at this, but this person wants to do this.
Yeah.
And then we'll.
So I see what you're saying.
Upon A, B, C, D, because we didn't get a chance to get those things.
But you don't, we don't have a problem with that, doing it before Bill and the fire department looks at it.
In those items, yes, we, right.
So.
Either or.
Is it at all reasonable to say that everything, any new items to be included on the agenda must be submitted like today for next meeting? It doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, it, it does if you think that it's a lengthy thing, for instance, the credit union that you have to, and it just triggered with me when Bob was talking, you know, we've had to have the mechanical inspector look at the plans. We've had to have the building official look at the plans, the fire chief, the plumbing inspector, the electrical inspector. See, theoretically, all of that should be done before it comes to.
And if you're doing anything historical, DDA was talking about possibly being involved, having Oakland County involved. I'm just saying, this is an outside entity, this isn't one of us saying, hey, Lee, can you add this to the meeting, we can do that at any point.
Right.
Before Liz.
Cause we can add something to the agenda tonight if we just wanted to.
Right.
Right.
We could.
Yeah.
I'd like to say I got it.
I think thirty days is fair because you, that nobody's demanding of us, that's up to us make the decision, oh, hey, great, we could actually get it on for you early.
Yeah.
I could.
Yeah, I mean, we can absolutely say, well, yeah, this is simple, we can probably include it, but.
Right.
Officially, we have, we have every right to say, well, we don't have time to process that, you'll have to be on the next meeting.
Cause I look, you know, back to back, Bill's gone, Dave's gone, two weeks, that's your two weeks right there.
Yeah, that's true.
It'd be nice to get those drawings, anything we do that's been signed off by the fire and police or fire in the building before we get it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense, I mean, it's like the bank, there's gonna things happen up there that.
Right.
On the come of, they're gonna do it, but, you know, we, we approved it, we're never, probably never gonna see it.
I, I agree, I think it would be, I would be more comfortable if we didn't have to say contingent upon A, contingent upon B, contingent upon C as we're approving things. Because then you have a lot of contingencies and how do you ensure they're followed up on?
Just like the dealership, it's in the minutes that they have to put those shrubs in there where at the bank, we've left it up to the building inspector to make that decision. Which, I mean, we have, I guess we have faith in him, I.
It is in the minutes that way.
We have.
In the green space.
Yeah.
And that's why Bill was able to do that.
His approval, not ours.
Yeah.
I just agree, you're saying.
Like my wife said, I like that authority stuff. But the power's in our side with those things, you know, and if it's documented and, and there just isn't any real question about it, I think, once it, once it's done.
Hey, Bob, what else you bringing up tonight?
I should.
Okay.
So we're going over this, um, this bylaws. So, in that paragraph we were just looking at, do you prefer to put tabled matters rather than adjourned matters?
I, I do, I like.
A table?
Yeah, I do.
How does Robert's rules state it?
Adjourned.
Adjourned, okay.
I've never heard of it being called adjourned.
Well, how many people here have read all of Robert's rules, not me. So, but I, I will say, state this, just so people know is that our current village council, uh, rules and procedures state that we will follow Robert's rules on all matters. So I think that's a bit extreme, but that's what they put in the rules and procedures, so maybe we should stick with Robert's rules terminology.
And this may also be planning terminology, if you would look that up, I'm not sure if that's consistent with, if this is what they're pulling it from. If the state planning, that might be.
Well, under rules and amendments, it does say the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order shall govern all commission meetings, so which planning commission? So if you guys wanna keep a adjourned, I mean, that's not a big deal.
So the adjourned is the terminology, I would say. We know what it means now, so.
Yeah, keep, keep a adjourned if you wanna be consistent with Robert rules.
Well, we do have to keep the document consistent with Robert rules, I'm changing it to tabled.
Okay, alright.
Perfect.
I mean, I like that better, but.
I had to ask why, what, what adjourned meant in this instance, we're changing it to a word I know well.
Okay.
Okay, fair.
We are tabled matters.
You're the one that will be questioned then, so perfect, yep. You run the office.
Rick, why don't you ask your opinion?
Like it.
I've heard a story in work, too.
Now we are all in trouble.
Since you asked.
Alright, where are we at now, Rick?
Well, we just took your Bob's concern there, so, but we skipped over other things we were talking about, so.
I'll go with that one right now.
So, does anybody see anything else in here that concerns you, I guess?
I, I just see calendar year again down underneath meetings, A.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't make any difference to me. Their, their last sentence talks about.
A public notice or which one?
That, that should a regular meeting not be required due to lack of agenda, the person will meet at least two times each calendar year to address these.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I guess.
Wow, so you have to have two minimum.
Has there ever been a year that we met only twice? I don't think so.
Okay.
Again, that must head back to a state law, you must meet at minimum twice.
Okay.
And then, um, I know it says the seven to ten o'clock, and I, I did not know that we, at ten, we have to take a vote to continue the meeting. I didn't know that.
If it does, if it gets to ten o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, and we've done some long ones before and we've never taken, we've never taken a vote at ten o'clock to continue.
We're just that dedicated.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I never knew that.
I didn't know that either when I went the other day, I'm like.
And obviously, these people just leave at ten.
I'm not sure what's going on.
A vote would be nice, be more polite.
More eight thirty. Or sometimes eight thirty, so that everybody gets only one minute to speak.
That's true.
Yeah, but that's something I did not know.
Are we going in order or just whenever somebody says something?
Okay.
Do I need everyone B?
That was under the meetings and on page three.
We're in meetings right now, B, special meeting, which may be called.
Did we pass something? Oh.
Chairperson or.
I didn't see anything in there.
Now, actually, it'll be given at least forty-eight hour notice.
Yep, and that's correct, and then the eighteen hours.
Yeah.
Posting, so that's.
What else was on page three?
I like, I like the rules and amendments.
They're open to the public or are they publicized, there's no.
Except for what you guys wanna do.
The rules are provided by these bylaws, so we can call it tabled if we want.
That's right, except, yeah, as provided by these bylaws.
Dare we add, instead of scheduled meeting calls on holiday, can we add elections, they fall in every election, we have to keep changing.
Oh, cause we're Tuesdays, that's true.
Holiday slash election?
That's not a holiday.
Or election.
Yeah, cause we're on Tuesdays.
Cause we had to change both of them last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, where's that again?
On the top of page four.
Thank you.
First sentence.
Yeah, I think you should add elections in there.
Absolutely.
I agree, or election, only cause two of us work the elections.
Right, two of us will be there.
Well, and, and all the rest of us.
Will be voting.
Better be voting, yeah.
Not only that, any of us have to be working elections, in fact, Bob has been working elections for a long time too.
Not too much longer.
Yeah.
Those things are turning into a whole lot of work.
Falls on a holiday or election.
Or election.
Election day I'm gonna put, if that works for you guys.
Okay. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't.
Well, it says shall be canceled and the items that agenda carried forth are the next appropriate meeting date.
Yeah, appropriate, so we can figure out when, we can decide.
Cause initially, I read that next meeting date, but you're right, next chosen meeting date.
Yep.
And usually, we try to plan our planning commission.
Okay.
Maybe it's a bomb.
Oh, that's nice.
You're so encouraging.
Well, at least we'll get it on video.
I think it was Greg.
It was for me. It was for me.
I'll quit sitting with my back to that door now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
All those years of training, Bob. Did you not remember your.
I'm hiding behind you, I'm absolutely going, I'm going behind you, that's what I'm doing, cause I know you're not handling.
So Rick, have you signed any of these meeting minutes?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Is there any other changes, anybody?
I don't have anybody from council sign the council minutes either, cause we guys didn't carry any rules of procedure, so I took it out.
I'm good.
So we're good?
Now, there's something else.
What else is there?
What is there?
Oh, if you go back to the agenda.
Okay.
There's the, um, the file of the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would like to recommend changing old business to unfinished business.
Okay.
And, um.
Okay.
I currently do new business first and then unfinished, I don't know if we've, you want me to go by this or do we wanna switch it?
Change it to how you're doing it.
Okay.
I don't think.
Consultants report?
Oh, my goodness, is that discussion items?
I think, I think is that like when we have. A mechanic or somebody like that come in or something like.
But why would they be last?
Yeah.
Wouldn't they be under the older new business, where they.
Were they, yeah.
Aren't following.
That's at least how we do the agenda now.
Reports should be considered part of, you know, they should be related to some kind of topic we have on the.
Did you say you're switching to old business above new business? Or you're not?
I'm gonna put, it'll be new business first.
Okay.
And then, because that's how I bend the agendas together.
Yeah, and then her unfinished.
Unfinished business.
Yeah, because I like how you have the agenda.
Right. Versus, and the items from commissioners instead of commission number comments.
Yeah.
And that is a, a good question, consultants reports, because, I mean, we do have committee reports on council meetings, but we really don't have consultant reports.
I'd like to see it, how she does it now at older new business.
Do you use consultant reports at all?
I've never used consultant.
Do we need it?
No.
That would even go under older new.
Because that would be older new, that's right.
So, it's right.
You can make it anything you want it to be.
Yeah, I think it should be adjusted to how she does it.
Can we change G to items from commissioners?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or we could even do commissioner comments, but I don't like commission member comments. I mean, we do have chairperson comments, we could do commissioner comments.
Or what do we call it on the village agenda?
Trustee comments, or items from trustees. It is items from trustees.
Items from.
Items from commissioners.
So, we should be items.
We already have that.
Yeah, so she should, we should just do it how she does it.
Oh, and you should have public comment in there.
It's up Bob, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, we do approval of minutes, and then we do.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Acceptance of agenda, approval of minutes, public comments. So, that's gonna change it.
How, how she has it now.
And then chairperson, then items from commissioner, and then we're gonna switch new, old.
And then we're gonna give her a consultant's reports.
And it's gonna be public comments, agenda items only?
Oh, no, we'd have to, you know, really.
No.
Currently, it's just pub.
Do we just do public comments?
That's a drunk brother.
Then the question is.
I don't wanna do that.
To make this better.
Yeah, okay.
To make this better.
Yes.
Do you think of, I think, public comments at the end, if people sit through our discussions, they may have public comments about our discussion items. And that would give them a chance to give us their opinions after they hear what we're talking about, rather than before.
Typically, go ahead.
Just one of the problems with that is that if there's an agenda item on there that they're disturbed about, they get an opportunity before we approve it to make their comments, otherwise.
We won't, no.
Unless you have it in two places, but like they, I don't know if the village does that, I think they do have, where they got comments at the end and agenda items only at the first.
Yeah.
And if you don't allow them at the beginning, you're having them sit through everything to make a comment, and they may just wanna come and ask you something.
It'd be too late to comment on an item because we either approved it or turned it down.
Right.
That's true.
Well, do we wanna do then like that, public comments on agenda items, and then at the end do public comments?
I think public comments is good, and we don't need a second one, because if you take a look at D, it says in here, President's state law, all commission members should be open to public. Orderly public participation is encouraged on each agenda item for a reasonable length of time, usually not to three minutes. So, I think that that, D, kind of opens it up, so public comments can just be public comments in general. When we get to each agenda item, I think D is encouraging us to allow the public to, uh, you know, we could probably request input from the public on any agenda item.
What D are you talking about?
Where was you reading that from?
Right underneath.
Middle of page three.
Okay, that D is acceptance of agenda.
Middle of page three.
Oh, D here, all right, all right. I'm looking at the actual.
Big D. Those should be numbered, after C, it should be numbered.
D is a dog.
Yeah, I was looking at our agenda flow. I thought we were on there.
And there's no period after call to order.
No, capital D, how's that? Capital D, President's state law, all commission meetings shall be open to public. And it's, and then we have orderly public participation is encouraged on each agenda item.
We shouldn't even say agenda then, if you want it to be open to anything.
Well, I think we want to encourage the public to give us general comments.
But then we shouldn't say agenda, so they can say what they want.
And that would be the portion for their public comments, when they can say what they want on any topic to address us. And then, as we move through agenda items, we can also take public comment on that specific agenda item, is how I would read that.
So, you wanna do a public comment twice?
Well, no, I'm saying that when we are talking about agenda topics amongst ourselves, if somebody in the comment has something to add to the topic, we, if, if, the way I would read this is we would not prohibit them from commenting on the agenda, and we would encourage participation with the public.
Or the chair could just simply ask.
Yeah, we could say, do you guys have any, what is your input? You know, we could, we could solicit input on any agenda item as we chose from the public as we're going through the agenda items, I think, is how I would read D, capital D.
Okay.
So, I don't think we need public comments in there twice, but I would say public comments, the section for public comments is for anything they want to address us, either something they want to address us
This is fine.
That's not on the agenda, or it could be something on the agenda, and then, as we're going through agenda items, we can always ask for their input, too.
Right, okay, so then, the question I have then, do we wanna do the public comments more at the beginning, like Bob had mentioned? Instead of waiting to the end, because I would hate for people to sit through everything.
Because they're not interested.
Yeah.
I think it should stay where it is.
Well, that's where we have it, right after approval.
I know, but Rick had mentioned he'd like it at the end, so.
But if they're, if they're, if they're open to speak during the new and old business, then that's why, too.
Well, that's, that's a new change. I mean, it's never been the case.
Well, it's, I'm just, that's the way I would kind of interpret what's.
It says pursuant to state law, so it has been the case, it just isn't.
That's kind of a dangerous.
Well, it says pursuant to state law, all commission meetings shall be open to the public.
Within three minutes.
But then, the next statement says public.
Twenty people.
On each item. So, they had something beyond just.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but, uh, because they.
No, it's the planning.
All right, all right, one, one conversation at a time, all right? You guys were talking, you guys were talking. Who wants to go first?
I'm done.
Yeah, we're done, Rick, go ahead.
We're good. We're good.
All right, so what is the answer down there?
Too much going in. I interrupted you.
What is the answer down there? Where are we putting it, public comments, people?
I like white words out. I like those out.
Amen.
All in favor?
Okay, well, it wasn't on there, so I want it in there. So, is it, will be F?
Well, they're supposed to be numbered, not lettered.
Okay, number it, so one, two, three, four.
Five, six.
Five, six, it will be six?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as it's in there, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
But, okay, so, but the idea was also brought up here, that public comment on any of our items we discussed.
They can do that, with the chairperson does it, they can do it.
Okay. I don't think you have to have it.
Right here for D.
Yeah, you don't have to have it on there.
But I think you're, and I believe Lee has done this all along, is when we have public, he'll say, do you have anything you wanna add, or do you have anything to say about this? Or I think, I think he's been doing that all along.
I think that's up to the chairperson to do, depending on what they mean.
And this says, you know, this says it can happen.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's specifically saying that we encourage public participation, which is, it's a good thing for us to do.
Okay, let's, can we move on?
Okay, is everybody good with this? I motion to accept it.
Um, D.
Oh.
Further pursuant to state law, D, that one. Um, where it says written comments to the commissioner, that line. Planning commission should be capitalized.
Oh.
And it should also be submitted for electronic or written comments. And then on the bottom, public comments submitted electronically or in writing, because it's, you are allowed to email, you don't have to write it.
Written or electronic.
Electronic or written, and then electronically or in writing. D, on the middle of page three.
Right here, what's in here?
She's adding that in the D.
You're adding it in?
Well, I'm fixing the capital letters for planning commission.
So, electronic here and electronic.
And then it says.
Say, okay, very good, that's why, okay.
Written comments, electronic or written, and then the bottom line is submitted electronically or in writing.
Okay.
Because, you know.
Yep.
Right, right, right.
Times have changed a little.
That's fine.
So, it's written in the public file.
So, they're electronic or written.
Here's another part of this that occurred to me, that if we have, if we have written or electronic comments that we received before this meeting, then they can be read.
Correct.
And the discussion of whatever they refer to.
Well, the chair can read them in comments, or if it's, if it's not. Like, if hypothetically, I've thrown out there, somebody sends one that says, we'd love to see the playground updated. It's not on here, but in the chairperson comments, he can say, receive an email that says.
Right.
It doesn't have to be in a certain area.
Or it could be in, under public comments, because those public comments, the person's just not here.
Yeah.
That's where it belongs.
Uh-huh.
Or it belongs with an agenda item that we're talking about, if it pertains to that.
Well, I think it would be in the section of the public comments, and then if it refers to agenda items, we would probably hang on to those when we get to those agenda items.
Well, either way, yes. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else anybody has that wants to say?
Um, I just think in general, a comment we are talking about, we have a chair and a secretary, we do not have a vice chair. And in more than one place, we do use, utilize vice chair, so we have to either confirm that or delete that.
Or secretary, let's see, if a chairperson or if one available by one of the other two officers, I guess we'd say.
Well.
We don't have a chairperson, vice chair.
We don't, we don't have a vice chair.
So, either we need to get one or we need to changes.
We've never.
Chairperson in, okay, section one twenty-five dot three eight one seven of the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. A planning commission shall elect a chairperson and secretary from its members and create and fill other offices as it considers advisable.
Yeah, and I think that's why we only did the two.
And so, I was thinking secretary, we have a recording secretary, I would think chair and vice chair, but it does say secretary.
Yeah, it explicitly states a chairperson and a secretary are the offices that have to be in the.
So, we're eliminating that vice chair.
In this?
Well, that, that is a secretary, in the absence of the chair and the secretary.
I'm just asking a question if we want to, I, I have no debate on that one. I just thought there was a decision made before I crossed out.
So.
It's a.
I think we should eliminate the vice chairperson.
We don't have a vice chairperson, we do have a secretary.
Yes.
Who can run meetings when the chairperson's at the.
What are we talking about?
So, in D.
On your page one and, well, page one A.
Then it would be your next senior ranking member, typically how that goes.
Page one A and your officers.
Yep.
Page two.
Page two, number D.
One given.
So, we just.
I'm on a commission.
Yeah.
Hold on, uh, page.
Page two, number D, just put the secretary shall preside.
So, then the recording.
And then the last sentence, get vice chairperson out of there. The last sentence in E.
On page two?
Page two still, yeah.
Right, gotcha.
Do you guys see it anywhere else?
Yeah, the last section of D.
Yeah, the last page.
Well, I mean, it, it doesn't say we can't have a vice chair, so if we want to have a vice chair, we could, but we have, we didn't have one before, did we?
We've never done.
Yeah, we did. Charlie Grayson was our vice chair. And then he resigned, and we haven't appointed.
I think we had our last.
Or elected.
We had a vice chair. That, that's been a while ago.
Charlie was a vice chair.
Yes, we haven't done the positions in quite a few years.
Charlie was a vice chairperson, we didn't have a secretary.
Meetings B, um, is, we need to change vice chair to secretary.
Well, I mean, we can, we can, according to this, we can create and fill other offices as it considers advisable. So, if we consider it advisable, we have a vice chair, we can leave it as is.
Right.
Let's leave it as, let's just do the secretary and the, um, chairperson, like we've been doing it.
If your secretary and your chairperson are missing, missing from the meeting, then your next highest ranking official would be.
Longest standing.
The longest serving official would be.
Okay.
I do have a question.
What's that?
So, we're eliminating the vice chair.
What's that?
Having the secretary sign off on the meeting minutes, do you want to do that?
Where is that at?
It's in D.
D to E.
After the commission approves the minutes of the meeting, secretary shall sign the minutes and direct.
Section B or five, capital D.
Last sentence in D. And the only reason why I'm asking is because, one, the village council does not have the president sign off on the minutes currently, and I've never had the secretary sign off on the minutes.
Okay.
I mean, you guys approve them, that's really all you need.
And I think that's because there's no recording. According to this, you are the secretary, you are the recording secretary.
Yeah, I'm the recording.
Right, right.
But according to this, that's what you're doing, you're taking it out, so, yeah, I can see why that's not necessary.
Yeah.
We have the luxury of having a recording secretary, so the secretary doesn't have to do so much.
So, can we get rid of the whole last sentence?
I think so.
Does that need to be changed to recording secretary?
Should we get rid of what?
The last sentence in D on page four.
The whole sentence.
And I already give the, um, village council copies of the minutes that have been approved.
Something that, unless it's required by the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act to have a secretary sign the minute. I don't think it is. I don't hear anything from the act.
Do we want a severability clause, if any part of these bylaws are found to be noncompliant to Michigan Planning and Enabling Act? Only that particular item is, uh.
No, we're good.
What are you saying now?
You know, the severability clauses, it means if you find it's found as one item, it doesn't invalidate the whole document, just that one item.
Why would anyone do that?
Because if you have a legal document and there's one item that's wrong, you don't have a severability clause, and it can completely invalidate the entire contract.
Rules C, the council capitalized.
What is it, um, is this something that we need to do?
I don't think we need to do.
All right.
Can we move?
All right. So, do you want me to edit these and bring them back to the next meeting, or do you want?
I, I think that would be a good idea.
Because that's what it needs, but you bring it back in next meeting, and it's the next meeting after that, we have to approve it?
No, we bring it back to the next meeting, and if we think it all looks good, we can adopt it.
Well, adopt it.
If there's one or two minor corrections, we can adopt it as amended, as long as we know. But I think we've got enough, you know, enough things, we probably should get a fresh copy, just to make sure that it all reads well and we didn't miss something.
And then it says in rules amendment B, that these bylaws may be amended at any regular meeting by a two-thirds vote as amended. By the commission.
Right, but it, it goes on someplace else, there's another state, and I thought I read on there.
What is your, um, point there, Rick? What, is there something you want to change?
If there's something we want to change, we can do it at any meeting.
Yeah, get it changed.
Correct.
By two-thirds vote, so.
All right.
Okay, so there's nothing you want to change, okay.
We've done it to each firm of commission at the preceding regular. So, we have to submit the proposed amendment changes at one meeting, and then we can approve those changes at the next meeting.
That's true, that's what it said.
And that's fine.
I'm sort of curious on why the very first sentence has a blank. Village of Wortonville Planning Commission was created by resolution of the Village of Wortonville Council in a meeting held on. Shouldn't they already have that in the record?
Oh, yeah, like, long time ago.
Well, it would, it would say on.
It says these bylaws were.
Right.
The first sentence, very first sentence.
No, it doesn't. It says the planning commission itself was.
Oh, we didn't know the answer, so we left it blank to fill in later.
Isn't it right in the, the code ordnance?
Good catch. So, we're going to add the date. So.
Yeah, do we know what, what date that was?
It would be in the code ordnance.
Okay, it is, then.
I've got it here somewhere. Where's my copy of the code of ordinance?
My computer went to sleep, I've been inactive too long.
Well, you're looking that up, last page four E, I mean, not the appendix A is attached.
It is.
It is. Clearly, attached.
It's not attached. It's not attached.
I know.
Four E, oh.
Oh, well, let me see if I can find the appendix A.
I'm just wondering.
I wondered that myself. Where is it?
I know my password is correct, don't mess with me.
So, just wondering.
All right, let's see what we can find.
So, apparently, there was an intention back then of having an appendix A. We have more things to do.
Village of Wortonville Planning Board Ordinance, ordinance twenty-four passed one thirty nineteen seventy-six.
One thirty, one thirty nineteen seventy-six?
This is where I'm at, is that correct?
I would say so, yep.
I thought somebody was over there just going.
One thirty nineteen seventy-six.
I do try to be prepared for meetings.
What date?
One thirty nineteen seventy-six.
January thirtieth nineteen seventy-six.
Okay.
Wow, I'm surprised it was that late.
All right.
All right, anything else? Oh, attachments.
An appendix, appendix A.
I'm looking.
Just, just, I'm sure you asked me, I guess.
Well, we either have to review it, include it, delete it.
Did I go through?
Appendix, hey, what a.
A appendix, I don't know, that's what it says.
Did you look at it?
E on page four?
I couldn't find it, but yes.
Okay. Village commission meeting dates, draft bylaws.
Do we have appendix?
No, that we're looking for.
I see.
I have a sample of the bylaws. Well, that's what we have, we're, oh, draft first sample. dated June of two thousand sixteen. That's from Brandon Toddchips.
Oh, that was our plagiarized bylaws?
Yep, and let me see what, um, I have samples.
That might be their appendix A, we plagiarized theirs and they had it.
I have Lee's notes.[1589.72]
So either we gotta grab, we put in the same, create our own subject A, or take out the subject B.
In A of rules and amendments?
Yes.
Look at, look at the first line in rules and amendments.
Right here, all right.
Current edition of Robert's rules?
Edition.
Yeah, it says current other.
Edition?
It should be addition, not A.
Edition of.
E like an addition, not addition which is a mathematical function.
Uh, there is no appendix A.
Okay, so we can delete that whole...
So just, just scratch out subject to appendix A?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, it'd be period after planning issue.
We do still want to include that we can establish advisory to these subcommittees, but we just don't have an appendix A to...
And Liz, did you get under rules and amendments A, edition of?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do the addition of Robert's rules.
What was our last, what was our last subcommittee equals rule seven?
Well, guess what, there one might be. It's on our agenda.
What?
Yeah, bring it, go.
Wayfinding.
Are we ready for C?
I'm ready. Sorry.
Here we go.
That's what happens when you give us a voice.
Wayfinding signs.
Oh, look at that.
What?
Nice stuff.
Wayfinding. Anybody have anything about wayfinding signs? Just wanted to present the...
Those that attended the joint meeting were able to kind of be in on the conversation. Those that weren't, to bring you up to date, planning commission, DDA, and village council all have great ideas, thoughts, and discussions about wayfinding. Let's all get together and do that. So, at the joint meeting, the discussion was to form a committee with representatives from each area to do that, and the discussion was kind of further verified that, that is planning commission's job, that is DDA's vision and expertise, and they have the resources to bring to us to do that, and so we haven't got to that point yet, but at the August meeting, village council would also like to have a representative to be on that committee as well. So, that's where we're at. So that's what that is.
So the village council's gonna decide who they want?
The village council will have a representative.
On the committee?
Well, we have to approve a subcommittee, because that's a short term. Then we have to decide the term, and then we have to, the president would appoint and council would approve a person on that committee.
Does anyone have an idea of how many people? Is it one person?
One person, but we haven't even done that yet, because we haven't had a meeting. So that will be our August meeting.
Fine. That was my question, how many people on the committee?
So are we looking to...
But you and DDA meet first.
Are we looking for a nomination for a person from planning commission to be included?
No, planning commission makes their decision as to if they want everybody, if they want one, DDA makes their decision. You guys decide what you're doing. And then village council would be invited to the process, because that is what planning commission's job is, is to do that, and DDA's job is to...
Okay, good. So, is there anybody, first of all, that wants to be on this wayfinding sign committee?
What, what all is involved with the wayfinding first?
And put back the vision, again, that's up to those participating. The vision is entryway, entryways, what do you call that?
Wayfinding.
No, when you come into the...
The signs, the Ortonville gateway?
Thank you, gateway signs in two, two, three areas, because the third is a discussion too, and the park signs, and everything being updated, modernized, as well as consistent.
And any other signage that is helping point you to destinations in the village?
Well, that would be secondary.
That's wayfinding.
Once we do, yes, the gateway, and then the secondary would be...
I believe that what we're, that what we had talked about, or what the concept for the committee is, we are not implementing the wayfinding signs. What we are, what we need to do first before we can even start doing anything with implementing any wayfinding signs is we have to have a design specification essentially, and that's what this committee is, is going to do, is to do, is to create a design specification that can be used to say, okay, yeah, here's our design standard, so now that we have our standard, we can go and order signage and, and, you know, whatever.
And what would it like, what would this look like, and then where would we like to order?
Yeah, so it'd be things like, you know, things like the style of fonts, possibly the color schemes, things like that, you know, that sort of stuff. So we have some kind of a design specification, so that when we create signage, they're all consistent and they'll have a common looking feel to them.
Um, does DDA, at this point, have any concepts that they've had locked up already?
They have ideas as well, but again...
Because I know they have that...
The resources from what they have to come in to be a part of that was the excitement as well.
Yeah, so they have nothing at this point really marked up?
I'm sure they have a wish.
Okay.
I think everybody does, right, but...
I think if I, if I can, if I remember, we were looking to have this committee have a certain limited time period, that, okay, the committee will be formed for so, a certain period of time, and we would expect that we would have results at the end of that defined time period, right?
Well, village council, in order to create that specific subcommittee, has to have a time limit. They can extend it, but you do not have to, but everybody would love to, obviously. It's not an ongoing project.
But I mean, I think, I think that's one of the things, is we're not looking to make this an indefinite committee. It should something, I think everybody expected it shouldn't take that long to come up with some kind of design specifications, and then once we have that standard or a template, then we can actually start looking at potentially ordering signage.
Well, first and then where they would be, and county also is, is great with that, where they should be.
Yeah.
In, in our master plan survey comments, I was looking through here today, and I'm not finding it right now, because there's so many, but there's someone suggested that the street signs themselves should be included, and, you know, updated it with a standard look for each one.
There are a lot of towns that do that, where they have kind of like unique street signs, which really makes the town stand out.
It looks good.
Yeah.
Have our signs be blue and white, or burgundy and yellow.
And, and some people have older antique-looking signs for their streets and some people have a modern-looking sign for their streets.
And that would be the project for the committee to decide?
And I would think that would go with the other gateway signs and park signs, it should be included.
And, you know, keep in mind budgeting and decisions like that, DDA has committed to add some funds. Village council then would be burdened with the remaining funds, and you would have to see which pieces go and which budget year.
And you don't, yeah, you don't have to do a lot of...
It can't be...
Once we have a design set, then we can, we can step into it incremental. We can implement it piece by piece, but once we know where we want to be with all the signage, then we just...
Oh, certainly, I understand that.
Break it down.
You made the comment that you can do maybe one person or all of planning?
That's up to them, planning and DDA, to decide what they choose to do.
Would you all want to be involved with that process? I'm just throwing it out.
I think it's too many heads.
Okay, but I'm just throwing it out.
Color and design?
If I could, I, I think from my, from my standpoint, I think I would prefer not to see the whole commission or the whole DDA involved and have a smaller committee, simply because there's already concerns about cost of meetings, and if we have everybody involved, that's a big cost, just to have people knock their heads, get it for design. So I would re, rather say that maybe less than a quorum.
Okay, but seeing that's very, I'm gonna say, your meetings have not, to this point from council, that's just, just, that's a bad example.
I'm just, I'm just saying, Zed, it does cost, the more people you have, the more it costs.
It does, but don't, don't stop me now, I have planning commission.
I want to make sure we have enough people.
Because we meet twice a year.
I, I want to make sure we have enough people to get good input, so I would recommend, you know, like, three people from each, at least.
Well, like I said, DDA and planning commission can make their decisions and what they choose to have there, and...
And DDA members are voluntary.
Yes, they are.
What do you mean, we don't?
And the other thing is if we keep a...
They don't get paid, Rick.
The other, the other point there is, as, as we know from when we try to have meetings about the chicken ordinance, is that if we have four people, now you're subject to the open meetings act, and you have to post the advanced meeting notes, which is not a problem. I don't have, no problem with having use of being in these open meetings, but I mean, that way if you have three, it gives more flexibility for the committee to meet.
Well, how about the original, first question is who's interested?
You know, less than a quorum.
Three total.
Less than a quorum from each board. That gives us more flexibility.
Your committees and stuff still have to be open meetings.
Subcommittees?
Yes.
All, everything should be.
More than...
When we, no, when we did the chicken, I mean, anybody was, remember Brenda Kane? When, when we met, anybody was welcomed.
When a committee is created, you still should have, committee or subcommittee is created, you still should have an open meeting.
So if the planning commission says they want to have two people or three people, automatically that's what the DDA will provide, or they will make their own decision?
They make their own.
So it could be two of us and four of them?
This is new waters. This is something that you decide what you choose to have.
So what I don't quite understand from what you're talking about is a quorum of what, a combined three groups, a quorum, or...
A quorum of any one body. But I mean, I'm just saying, that's a consideration. We don't have to worry about it.
What I'm asking is, do, can we have, like, if we have one person or two people from planning commission, and one or two from DDA, and one perhaps from village council, does that need to be an open meeting?
Yes.
Is it a quorum of...
Yes.
Of which? A quorum of what?
A quorum, it's a subcommittee.
Every meeting should be an open meeting unless it falls under certain closed-meeting standards, that is Open Meeting Act law. Every single meeting should be...
When we were working on chicken ordinance, as long as we had less than a majority...
We were wrong at that time.
Okay.
But it was open, that anybody that wanted to come in there.
Yeah.
We invited people to come there.
And you had the public and you were asking for input.
We were asking for people to come.
So was it officially posted? No, was it open? Yes, but there's that fine line of, should it be official? Yes.
That's the question.
So we're working, we're learning, we're growing.
Okay, do you, do you know by chance who on council is interested in being on this?
We have not even had a meeting, we haven't had a conversation. I would appoint and they would approve, just like any other council.
I would like to throw this out. When we did the chicken, me, Larry, and Rick, we didn't charge, and DDA doesn't get paid either. So I would recommend that council doesn't charge either.
I'm pretty sure, and I'll look again, you have to.
That's their business, I...
They can't choose to, um, we had that discussion about, okay, so you get paid, can I give it back? Can I donate it? Can I give it to another member? I believe you have to get paid, that's, I believe, and I'll look at it.
But they could get paid a dollar.
I don't believe you can make it. It says they're what you get paid, I believe you have to get paid. And you, somebody doesn't have to serve on a committee, it's an invite. I, I would like to say, hey, it's open to all three people, and you make the decision, and that's fine, but for historical, for, you know, whatever committees, there's one person on it. So it's not, you know, can we have less than a quorum, it's one person's going to be in, you know.
Right, and I understand that. I was just wondering if, since, you know, Larry's concerned about, you know, pay, that would be a good way to have them volunteer a little bit more of the time instead of getting paid for every step they take, but if you can't, you can't.
I would think just one or two from the planning commission, with the whole, DDA has the expertise of other people to provide, as long as there's input from the other, other groups. I, I mean, I don't want to go there and, you know, they didn't like the sign I put up out at M fifteen. DDA took that down years ago, that great big downtown sign. They took that down, but I, but it needs to be somebody that appreciates the color and a bit of a design, and the DDA has people that, from the county, that are qualified for, I think...
Oh, yeah, and it's free.
Our biggest thing is the location, that it gets located.
And the standards and the sizes and the, is it electronic, does it have lights, does it sing, planning commission? How does it look? Is it pretty?
Well, it's got to come back at some point.
But instead of doing the back and forth, you're doing it together, and it's done, and it's quicker, and it's faster, and it's cheaper.
It should be, yeah.
So that's the point of...
As I said, it should be.
In my vision. Now I woke up.
Yeah, and by the way, I stand corrected, you're, you're absolutely right. It's, it's any public body or committee has to be open, I'm sorry. So it doesn't matter whether we're a quorum or not.
No, it doesn't.
But it is, I was good to catch, keep in mind the quorum and how you're saying it all by yourself.
Okay, so, here's the question that comes up, what you just were talking about is, planning commission already has, and we've worked on extensively, sign ordinance with Bill's input all the time. So would this fall under planning commission sign ordinance?
That's why you're involved, and that's why it's your job?
Well, it's not why, why we're involved. I mean, all three bodies are involved.
Right, but I'm saying, anyone could take it and run with it, but you can't. You'd have to have that input.
It has to be approved here.
My feeling is that it's, it's more related to the master plan and our vision of our community as opposed to, the sign ordinance is more about, you know, limits on size and stuff like that, and where they can be placed and things like that, whereas we're talking about look and feel, which is a different aspect than what our sign ordinance really covers, other than we say no flashlights and things like that.
But then, those things that you just mentioned would apply to whatever sign design we sign on. So it kind of like, we work on this with DDA and council, and then tuck it into the sign ordinance, or at least becomes part of the sign ordinance that we kind of approve and develop, I would think. What do you guys think about that? What?
Which is part of the zoning ordinance, is that, yeah.
Yeah. So in the way, we're involved in it at the end, whatever we come up with.
But I, I will say this, is I know that DDA also being involved as a Main Street committee, they also have a design committee and things like that, and resources from Main Street that...
Right.
Are involved with exactly that aspect about design and the feel of the community creating a, a, a sense of place. So I know that that also is, is very closely tied with the Main Street Act, which is the DDA too.
All right, any other things about the sign wayfinding? Okay, moving on, who wants to be on it?
Yes, who's on the committee?
I would be interested.
Okay, there's two.
Oh, Patty and I, would you want to be on?
Minus Lee's input?
Would you want to be on there?
Okay.
No.
Okay.
I think two is enough.
Do it. Have you got, are you guys good with that?
Well, like I said, Lee's not here to speak if he chooses to.
So if it comes down, we are gonna just put all the women here.
If Lee doesn't want us to do it, he can call us and help.
No, I'm saying, he can also choose to be, maybe he wants to be on it, I'm just saying, where, yeah, and he could add on there.
Oh, of course.
We have our two members.
Of course, any of us can attend at any time as publicly.
Absolutely.
Of course.
Zoning ordinance discussion, what zoning ordinance?
I just put that on there, just to get you guys thinking about, as we're starting to get nearer to the end of the master plan, the building official has highly suggested we start taking a look at our zoning ordinances, because a lot of them are antiquated. So just kind of put that in the back of your mind, that's the only thing I wanted to...
So is that something we're going to do, or is this going to get sent out to somebody else?
That's something that we can do, we, or we can send out. I think, last time, I think we did have help getting that done, but typically after you update your master plan, you would go back to the zoning ordinances and realign them with the current master plan.
But I'm just saying, we, we're not gonna send it off to McKenna or something, that...
I don't think McKenna would want this one sent out.
Nope.
I don't think we would send it to McKenna, no. I think if we felt that it was beyond our scope to be able to handle on our own, we would probably hunt around for somebody that...
That's fine, that's all, that's all I care about.
I can tell you the basic concern from both Bill and Mike Gilder is simply the enforcement of the ordinances, not necessarily the wording of say a space, but it is the misdemeanor versus the municipal infraction discussion, and that's what they both stated, and that's very consistent. You would put it, the word search in there, you'd find these words, you'd check through those exact ordinances, start with that, and then you could move on to something else.
But from my perspective...
But that's an easy fix, with something like that.
From my perspective, I think that we started this way the last time around with the previous master plan and the zoning ordinances, is moving in a direction of form-based type zoning as opposed to use-based type zoning, and from what input we had this time around, it seems that we didn't get there yet. I would like to see us continue to move in that direction, because I think that's a better way to help ensure that we can maintain the character of our village, the way that we envisioned in the master plan, is by ensuring that new businesses and new development, or even re, redevelopment of existing structures and buildings are consistent with the vision, and the, the best way to do that is with form-based, which says, hey, it's not as much important what you're doing in there, it's more important the look and feel of the establishment.
How many, um, do you think we, there are, go through roughly, I don't have my book here with me.
Zoning ordinances?
Yeah.
How many pages is it?
I think there's ten chapters, I think.
So is this something, since, um, is this something that we would want to do special meetings on, and just do so many each meeting for the planning commission, just they go through chapters one and two, and then we do another one, two, three, and four?
Well, you could just do that at your regular meeting, that should, each month, as you meet, like, like we did with master plan.
We could, but I know that council doesn't, so I'm thinking that instead of making our meetings long, council will make a meeting just to read the master plan. So I'm thinking, maybe we could attack it that way.
And I know Bill has several, he's come across several things in the ordinance where we're going through something, he's like, well, that ordinance doesn't work with what you have previously. So Bill Dinan probably has some ideas too on what needs to be changed.
Right, and that would be great.
And it would be a good start, too, and like him to say where do you start, and how do you...
So it's ninety-two pages long, it's seven chapters, seven chapters.
It's, it's the book.
Yeah, and, yeah, I didn't have mine on me to see. So I'm just thinking, who, would any, when, anybody be interested in just having a couple meetings strictly on that, so we're not making these meetings go till a time?
Absolutely.
I'd like to have Bill come in and see what's what first, and see before we make decisions, so he knows, he can tell us what we need to be deciding.
I still want to go through each chapter, though, and I'd love his input, or if he could be here.
We have these special meetings, we should try to, at least some of them, work around Bill's schedule.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what he needs to be here, does need to be here for, that's what I'm saying. We need Bill to tell us a...
Well, I, yeah, I would suggest.
Basic idea and go from there.
Get your recommendation from Bill, so I can talk to him when he comes back from vacation and say...[1675.72]
But I don't know if we need a recommendation to agree if we're going to do.
Oh, no, I'm just saying on the types of changes and what needs to be.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I agree.
And I think it would also be advisable if we went through a first pass on our own to go through everything first and then get a feel for, okay, do we feel we need external consultation in some of the areas and stuff like that? Because at least if we can get through there, we might say, yeah, we might need help for these sections here, but to just, you know, I'd rather go through it first and see what we can come up with first.
But he works with these every day.
Yeah, he does.
So he would have a really good idea and that would give us.
That's why I think.
As well as our manager.
Us going through it with Bill, that's what I mean, us going through it with Bill.
Oh, I thought you meant without him, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Before we consider going to a third-party consultant to come in.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying.
Yeah, no, I was talking about before we go to a McKenna or somebody like that. Let's go through it first, a first pass and see how many areas we feel that we might need some assistance on or not.
I agree.
I know it was McKenna last time.
We need to go to anybody we might be able to do it all by ourselves.
Have to see. Depends on how comfortable we are with that.
So I guess, let's do, we'll have to check with Bill to see when he could either give us recommendation on Pedro or if he wants to meet with the first meeting. And we'll get through what we can and then we'll do another meeting and get through the rest, I guess.
Yeah, so I can see if he's available to attend the September meeting?
I'm just gonna say our next meeting and then see what needs to be done there, what there, that would be nice to.
The September meeting, the September meeting, that's the day after Labor Day?
Labor Day? Are you gone?
Great, yeah.
So do we want to change that?
You can excuse me.
I can't remember if we moved that one or not.
No.
You want, what's the next Tuesday meeting that after that?
That'd be the third, right?
Date, I'm sorry.
It's the third and then the next one would be the tenth.
Tenth? Are you good with the tenth?
Yeah, I mean, you'll need to change everything around, but I just, I won't be here.
Well, because if Bill's coming to that one.
We have the choice of meeting with you or meeting without you.
Yeah, we want you.
Be with you.
We want you.
If we're able to just change it to accommodate you, we'll do it.
And we have Dale and Bill to check.
Yeah, see if. Because Bill, Bill will be key.
Who's Dale?
The new manager.
Oh.
Oh, it's the manager?
That's what I'm saying, and he's well-versed in.
Because we should have, the plan should be.
And he accepted our.
Done at that meeting too, right? It gives you, it gives an extra week if we could do it on the.
There's that Esmer.
That background, he's not a criminal, I mean.
I thought the Esmer was planned.
I don't have anything on the medical thing.
Well, you want to send a thing out and ask what date?
Well, we gotta, they gotta see what's going on with Bill first.
Okay.
So what I think is. If we.
Patty might not be able to do it on the tenth.
I'm not sure yet, so don't.
You want to get dates from Bill and then send them out and see what works for everyone?
And Dale, we'll do.
Yeah, Bill and Dale. I'm sorry, I'm not going to stick to.
A manager yet. Bill and Dale?
Yeah.
This is not the Bill and Bill show. By the way, I sent Bill a picture today because the new governing magazine came in. And on the cover it says, Kansas, how do we fix it?
Oh, no.
So I took a picture, I'm like, they have Phil Sprague, that's all they need.
Kansas, how do we fix what?
So it's not Kansas?
I know, it was just like the cover with the window on.
I mean, could you just say Kansas?
Yeah, Kansas.
So you know, sometimes, some months, we don't have any meeting because we don't have anything to talk about.
And we can do with these.
Yeah, we can fill in, if we don't have other things to talk about, we can work on the zoning.
Absolutely.
All right.
Good find out for those that know.
I know, I need to sit and read it, I've never had anything really to do with zoning.
I've never read it cover to cover, just pick through it.
I've only go to the areas that pertain to certain meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, well, I will read it paragraph by paragraph, but I need to get an understanding of it.
This is the good way to do it. This is what died right in.
Now we're at unfinished business. Master plan draft review, oh boy.
Well, what I did was I just provided you guys with the changes only.
Okay, yeah.
That council made to the, at their workshop on, was that Monday?
My new joint.
Thursday.
Yeah, that was Thursday.
Yes.
So I gave you that.
Meetings, meetings.
But the most significant changes are actually not in the plan itself, it's to mapping.
Okay, and that's why you gave us the map?
Yep, so.
One more additional change?
I fixed it already.
For them, before they got them? That's what I'm saying. If you just real quick on the fir, the second page, the Village of Ortonville mission statement, the very last. Point, instead of and where, it's welcoming residents. And then a period after spirit and delete our welcoming. That was the only change that we forgot to ensure.
So on the maps.
And then the Russian.
See that goes along with the whip up there.
Which map are we looking at first? We will look at first. Existing land use map. The most significant change to that is in the legend where it says recreation slash conservation.
Yeah.
We're adding also slash preservation.
Can I grab a map pack if I'm just. I wasn't going to take it because they were making changes, but I'll take it. Thank you very much.
So the second one is and preservation?
Piska, thank you.
Recreation, conservation and slash preservation.
Oh, preservation, yeah, of course.
Because some people thought preservation and conservation were so dramatically different, they needed to have it all.
All right.
On the future land use map.
Which is all right.
If you look at where the nature, natural preserve is, the border like on ITC, the ITC corridor, there's just like an overlay. You can see like an orange border and a black border.
Yeah.
That's more of an aesthetic type thing.
Oh, so they're just going to move it so they're together?
Yeah.
Yeah, because obviously there was just some kind of overlay.
See how there's like an orange and yellow lines or orange.
It's confusing as to where that line was.
What's the point, what?
They're just going to fix it so they come on.
Because there's a little bit of a, there's a green line and then the orange line and they're not on top of each other, so double color.
Yeah, we're assuming that those lines were all supposed to be coincident with each other and they're not. So it just looks a little bit strange on the map, the way the greens and things don't line up.
Well.
The line of the creek doesn't follow the blue line and.
The line of the creek isn't the boundary line there between the school property and the village park. The line of the creek has been as long, in the twenty-one years I've been looking at this, it's been different. And it's, maybe it's a mistake at the county level, but it's always been different there. This part here where it shows the school, the creek, and then also the school property there.
Oh, my God.
There's never been.
One little spot you mean, the boundary?
There's never been.
Rick, hold it up so we can see where you're.
This part here, it has never matched up on any of the maps I've ever seen.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's, it's not surprising it doesn't match up now because it apparently was intended to.
All right.
It was intended to go along the creek, but then it was not going along the creek.
For example, this dotted yellow line here and a dark line, one of these is, if the.
It's off.
Solid line is the ITC corridor, why does the dotted, the yellow line often?
What does the yellow line represent? Natural preserve?
A boundary of a natural preserve area, but if it's all natural preserve, it doesn't make sense the yellow line falls in between the property line.
As you're saying, that, that yellowish boundary along there.
Yeah, I should be coincident with the property line.
Okay, the ITC corridor is not natural preserve, it's just ITC corridor. So it shouldn't be included in the green.
So we're going to leave this path with the owner?
It shouldn't even be included in the green part.
Well, I think it's, it's not part of the wildlife preservation part, but I think they're saying, okay, this is left to preserve as undeveloped area or something.
Could be.
So that's why it's total like the, that green part, because we also have this area over by Duck Creek. On the southwest corner of the village, that's also a natural preserve, because that's basically wetland area and.
Okay, so we're not talking about, we're not just talking about it.
We're not talking about an official designation as a preserve, we're just talking about this area is just like natural areas, I think.
Yes.
Must be. And maybe that's okay.
Are we good?
Oh, good.
We're amazing.
Yeah, we just wanted the map to look a little cleaner because there was questions about why are there these different lines that don't fall on top of each other, what are they doing?
Yeah, and that's still a question.
So what's the next map?
Yeah, what's the next?
Mobility Plan?
Is the mobility plan, this is the one, a fun one. On the future pathway lines, the orange-yellow lines.
Yes.
They've asked to remove paths that go across private property and OWPP. So they're, anything that goes across somebody's private property along the creek.
And they also asked to remove it around along the school property too, right?
So they're removing most of them?
So they've asked to keep Ortonville Road, Oakwood Road, Ball Street, Naren Park, Ranger.
Basically, anything that is on an existing roadway or public property.
Everything else will be.
And who asked to remove that?
Council.
So they have no future plan of ever having a pathway along that creek?
Well, if it goes along the creek on the banks, it would be encumbering somebody's private property.
Correct, but, but there's, but there's no option in their world that that could ever happen.
That's correct.
Until 2020.
That's correct.
Election 2020.
Okay.
So these, all right, what is this Duck, Kersley Creek Pathway?
That's being taken out.
Yeah, was that the name of it?
What are you talking about?
Is it renamed there or that was just how you referred to it?
That's how.
Duck Creek, Kersley Creek Pathway.
That's a thing that was, you know, inserted, an idea that came into our master plan back in 2007.
Oh, the name?
The name, well, the concept.
The concept, yeah.
Not necessarily the name, but the concept. And so.
That's okay.
It was an idea and it hasn't ever been acted on, nobody's ever done anything about it since then, which apparently is.
We're supposed to remove the connectors to the.
Why are we taking that?
I thought they said something about those connectors.
I can't remember if we explained why they're there or.
The connectors, the green?
State Recreation Connector, and I, and I think they said, we're not planning on having trails. And I thought we said, well, why is it a problem because it just is a possibility? Do you remember what they?
Yeah, yes, they chose to have them moved.
Okay, so.
Some of the connectors to other recreation areas will be removed as well.
Okay, that's fine, this will all change.
So we'll just turn into.
This is all going to change, Rick, don't get upset about it, it'll all change.
Okay, so this is the one that I think will make it, they have to come back to you guys for approval.
Which one?
The recreational opportunities map.
So we're not doing anything with natural features?
The wrong with the dots.
Natural features, it does.
Those are natural.
So three things on this map. One, they've asked that it be removed from the plan and placed with appendix A on the public input. Or the, from the open house.
Right.
Two, in the title, they want recreational opportunities, they want it to also read from public open house held on, whatever the date of that was. And then in the legend, they've asked that a identifier be input that says each dot represents one person's opinion.
Okay, so they're asking us if we'll make those changes?
I think we need to check with McKenna on that one because I don't remember us deciding that and that's fine if some people did. We don't know that that is the fact, that each dot represents, so I think we need to verify that before we do put a key on a map that we did not create.
There were several dots on several boards, I.
So that we just need to verify, is that possible? I can tell you the input from council was some of them, the concern was some of them are on private property. And so it's not necessarily future opportunities, it's possible opportunities. Well, when you're combining it with, that's what the resident survey said, well, then let's put it with the resident survey. Others wanted it completely removed. I would love to see it in the appendix and with the people that made those decisions where they put their dots with them and combined. So that was, I think that happened to be.
Since, since we did not specifically approve this map with these dots showing it like this as, as part of our process to say, yes, this is appropriate in section five under future recreation opportunities. Because we didn't, you know, put the dots on the map there, this was public input in my opinion.
Or verify where they can.
McKenna put that, inserted that on the recreational.
So what's this, so it goes with the public opinion?
So I think it, it does make sense to keep it with public opinion, but I think I absolutely want to make sure we keep the public opinion, keep the dots. Because there was at one point, one person wanted to remove the dots from.
That would just be a waste.
Wildlife preservation park and I, and I did not feel that it was appropriate for us to censor the public opinion.
But it doesn't, I don't see any reason why it shouldn't say public opinion.
Yes.
I mean, that makes sense to me.
Because it, opportunities according to who.
Yeah, public opinion.
Who decided that, the taxpayer, the, you know.
It was.
So by adding that line.
Oh yeah, and so how was the pickleball at skate park decided if, you know, we want to hide public opinion? How did pickleball come up for the skate park?
Was anything decided, it's temporary because nothing can go in during the season. They said, hey, can we throw down some tape and can we put that up for the rest of the season?
Who is that?
Something in there. Pat, Recreation, Fred had a discussion. So it's just, it's not even approved until a discussion at the August meeting, if that's possible, possible, it was just a conversation.
Pickleball.
It's just, you know, we have all this public input and we pay money to have open houses and people come and take their time, then we want to hide it. But then it just.
Or remove it altogether.
Yeah, and just one meeting, someone can decide, and council, you know, we're going to put pickleball in.
Well, we did say that, I will say this, we did say, well, let's not rush, let's get some more detailed facts around it, et cetera, before.
Right, I would love to see with the public opinion from the open house we spent money on, how many people want pickleball? Just curious.
Well, I think those people wanted skate park, it's gone, so we have to move from here and figure out what's the best use for that property.
Right, but of all the public comments that you received, I'm just curious, how many were pickleball?
Well, we did have a member of the public who said he was in favor of having pickleball.
Well, like I said, you know, we couldn't decide what was there because it was skate park at the time and that was what it was.
But then, no, yeah, at the time it was changing over because we were selling the equipment and whatnot. And it was already closed down because we weren't getting enough people to come in and pay the money. It's been shut for what, two, three years, basically? So, I don't know, I'm just curious to see how many people want it, pickleball? After we went through that whole exercise.
At least one.
And that's primarily senior citizens, isn't it?
That's why they thought with the senior center. Because the, Harvey Swanson also offered the tennis courts in front to be turned into pickleball tournaments. Clarkston has the Turner's Davis and his terms, they all have them, and then that's kind of a money raiser, so that's an option as well. For another time.
To you, is that in our maps?
That's it for the master plan.
I thought it was a greatest escape.
Oh, did it go through all the?
Well, those were all minor changes that are all highlighted with page numbers.
Minor changes.
Yeah. Like why do we have two 2010s on a graph with two different numbers for population? We didn't, we didn't know the answer to that, it's curious.
There are some corrections on titles and there are some.
She wants me to send her the word document.
I spent so much money on them. I did a terrible process.
Thank you for the details, could you please send us your latest edited document? After she told me she didn't want the edited document.
Sure, it'll cost you five hundred dollars.
No, or ask the question, or answer the question.
No, not yet.
Are we doing CIP?
Well, listen, I'd like to point some things out there. Oh, yes. Let's see.
What are we on?
We're on the master plan.
Oh.
What page are we on?
Public opinion.
I have a question. Are you supposed to remove things as they completed or do they stay on there?
I believe, I thought we put the date next to it.
Do we have a column for status?
First tier evaluation and second tier evaluation.
Yeah, but I think that's for prior consideration.
That's always.
We need one, well, let's, while we get to that, we'll talk about it.
Okay, so just.
What page?
Just to make, well, it's not.
I don't have a.
All right, several pages.
Oh, okay, all right.
Go to the first one a lot, yeah.
All right, let's see, so I guess the first one I want to look at is transportation. And this is one of the latest, page sixty-seven. It's not one of the latest changes, it's just a change of sixty-seven, yeah.
Sixty-seven.
So in our input, in our master plan 2018 survey. Seventy-three percent of the people that replied to us wanted nature trails and walking paths in our village park. But somehow our master plan now says pathways. And any place where it talks about pathways, it says excluding Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, which is the same land mass as. Where seventy-three percent of our respondents wanted. landmass as, where seventy-three percent of our respondents wanted nature trails and walking paths in our park. So, I just want to point that out for our record, that what we have here goes completely and directly against what our residents that responded to our survey wanted.
I, I can share with you that that was not a unanimous council decision to add that exclusion onto that, so.
Well, it's an incorrect exclusion based on input we received from our residents. So, we have four people on the village council that are deciding against, let's see, 289 people in our village. I mean, in our, um, responses from our input from village, seems quite incorrect to put mildly. Okay, that's what I want to point out before we get off of our master plan.
I agree with you, it's frustrating, and we hope that.
All we can hope is that those 289 people who would like that take note of which council members are representing their views and which ones are not, and take some action about that sometime.
And this can be changed at any time.
That I've heard you say, but it doesn't appear to be true. I mean, I don't see any way that we're going to change it once it's approved in this incorrect fashion.
Well, because it says, um, we would like a path here, but we would not like a path here, we can change our mind and say, you know what, we do, we want both paths. We can do that.
And in here, the future land use, that's, that's the pathway to mobility plan, the majority on the village council wants all pathways removed from our park, apparently. And as well as other places, do they want?
Again, that was not a unanimous decision.
Well, I, I know that. I know who's on the council, but it's flying in the face of the residents of the village, or at least the majority of the res-, vast majority of the residents that have given us their input and what they want. How is that possible that we can be approving this kind of thing? I don't get it.
Well, the good news is if we receive a $2 million, um, well, donation, that we might be able to consider some paths in some of our parks. Because we'll have the resources for that, and we can go make those decisions.
Uh-huh, okay, you say so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't get it. All right, so.
There's nothing we need to do with this review of the master plan? That's all?
It's just an FYI, yeah.
This was just information.
Yeah, just to keep us informed about the additional changes and corrections that were noted by council from the last workshops.
So, the CIP.
I would say two-thirds of those corrections in there were things that McKenna were supposed to fix the first time.
Oh, boy. It was a total fail, and their part wasn't in this, this process. Are we on CIP?
We are. CIP in you.
All right.
Okay.
Kind of like PYT.
I'm not going to say anything about dating.
So, then, I'm, I'm going to base upon something that Liz mentioned just briefly, I would propose that we should probably add a column on all of the sheets after proposed fiscal year, before the evaluation things, or we could maybe put a lot, well, no, I think it'd be better there, because it's easier to look at there, is. We should probably also have a column there for status, so that we can have it, like, proposed, started, uh, complete, whatever, and, and have some kind of status that can be used also for helping to sort. Um, I don't, did you distribute the electronic copy back there? Okay, so, in the electronic copy, uh, I had added some formatting to allow filtering on the columns, and then that way, we can take a look at what projects are each year, and we can also use that to filter out things like, for example, if we have completed projects, we can, you know, remove that in the filtering and make it, gives us more flexibility to view a lot of different aspects within the spreadsheet. So, I think a status column would be important to insert there, yeah. Any thoughts?
Proposed, in progress, completed?
Yeah.
And the city council should be village council.
Oh, in the column?
Yeah.
Yeah. Clearly, we got this from another provider.
Well, that was, yeah, I think that was partly a template that came from Row, because they got their stamp on the bottom of it, it looks like. And I think we had asked to have that format in there based upon, uh, seeing that, and we liked that. Was that at that, um, CIP party meeting we were at, Rick, that they had this type of a format?
Well, I don't remember.
In Owasso?
Exactly, it gets you there.
Yeah, I remember we asked some things about different evaluation things to be put in there.
I think.
And we liked that.
That was a recommendation, that you have, keep track of it, and began, and when it was completed.
Oh, the status, yeah, but I mean, these other, the first tier evaluation, second tier evaluation criteria, I remember that the evaluation criteria was something that was covered in that, um, planning workshop we went to in Owasso for.
Correct.
Captain Improvement Planning, and that was, I think that was very interesting, and I think that was a good addition to include those.
Yeah.
But that's what, this was a template that was added in, that's probably why that's CIP study.
Yeah, so, you're building in grounds, for example, uh, the air conditioning was done, completed, and you'll tell them, so you would have your, that column, status column, and you say, put completed.
Yep.
And there's like just a couple little type of things, can I just send you those, Liz? Okay.
What is this, um, non-motorized facilities category?
What page are you on?
Three. Non-motorized facilities.
You put equipment there, huh?
Yeah, it's a category.
Yeah, you put equipment.
Non-motorized facilities usually would mean like.
We can change that heading maybe to DPW Equipment.
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe DPW Equipment and Facilities?
Yeah.
Well, just call it Equipment and Facilities.
Equipment and Facilities?
I mean, it doesn't, we don't specify DPW, we have equipment that's not necessarily specifically DPW, so Equipment and Facilities we cover, because they have sheds and other things on there.
Buildings, the LED lights, that's what we're.
Almost everything is done, I think we're just waiting on a couple of things for Old Town, or the Old Mill.
Is the Old Mill completely paid for by the toll?
The, the building itself?
Well, I mean, anything.
Utilities, upkeep, yes.
Utility is a village property.
Yep, general, maybe, yep.
And don't buy the bill.
Correct.
Cool.
Okay. On those changes?
The other formatting I did is on the summary page, I made that one, so it was just links back to all of the other ones, so if we add a line, add information in one of the previous pages, that should automatically, we'll have to try to populate on that summary page, so we don't have to add anything.
Yeah, I like it, I like what you guys did, thank you. You and Liz are vises here, I'm liking it.
Why didn't we do anything?
Liz, this place would fall apart without you.
I told you.
That would not.
So, do we have any?
Thank you, though.
Are we, are we, anything more on CIP? No. Going twice, gone. Discussion items. Who wants to start? Seems like. Anything?
No.
Oh.
Oh, good.
Who wants to be in the minutes for the next motion?
I'll be.
Do it. Support it.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed.